All right, six o'clock, call the meeting to order. Take a motion to approve the minutes for November seventh.
So moved.
Second, any changes?
No, I don't have any.
Nope, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Adjustments to the agenda, Dennis, did you want to go now?
Whenever you want me to, kind of Mike asked me to come to talk about the grant.
Yep, you're up then.
Okay, I'm Dennis Casey.
Okay.
So, light is out of the country, but Grandin has been awarded a MRF grant in the amount of three hundred and, about three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for upgrades and efficiency upgrades for all town buildings, the firehouse, community center offices here, and the town garage. Have to make a decision by or sign off by December sixteenth if the town wants to accept the money. There was a need assessment done of all of those buildings prior to the submission of the grant, so there's, it's kind of scope of work has already been defined in terms of what would happen with each building. Can't add anything to it at this point, it is just, there was, I know, Carrie, there was a question about whether or not the ADA bathroom could be, or the downstairs bathroom here could be added to that, and it cannot, can't add anything that wasn't in the original scope of work. But that said, you don't have to do it all, we just have, in two years, spend the month. And I believe it looks like twenty percent of the grant award would be delivered, distributed upfront, so begin paying contractors immediately without having to, you know, kind of bill and wait and that kind of trouble. So, Mike asked me to see what questions you folks might have, you know, what interest you'd have in the money, there is no match, so the town, essentially, you know, almost four hundred thousand dollars for your town for those upgrades, if that's what they want to do. And I think, from my understanding of Mike, it also fits in with some of what you're doing in the planning commission, in terms of some of your long-term goals.
Yeah, every town has long-term goals, and one thing I like to add, when money like that comes to Grandin, you know, there's usually not four hundred thousand dollars lying around in for local businesses and tradespeople, it could be a boon, maybe great jobs for, for them to pick up, you know, as part of their everyday work, so like, if we did before, we tried to use as local contractors as possible, so just keep that in mind, but make your own.
And that, the way I understood it from Mike too, is we would be able to hire through the grant, like clerk of the works or an administrator type person?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, there would be mine, there's about twenty percent of kind of soft money in there to cover some of those overhead expenses that aren't directly related to, to build out.
Yeah, because it's going to be quite a job to oversee all that stuff.
Yeah, and I have agreed to help Mike with that, Mike's going to be pretty tired of the other communications grants, and so I have agreed to help out with that process as well.
Now, will you guys be helping out as far as finding an administrator, that type of thing, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, NBDA is partnering with us on this, and they, they're going to have all this, of approved contractors and project managers available to, doesn't mean you have to do that, but they will have already done some of the legwork in terms of doing that as well, and there's a, like, woman named Carter Finnegan is going to be our contact person with NBDA for the grant, so there's going to be some technical assistance available on their side for that.
When does the two-year clock start ticking?
Has to be spent by the end of December twenty twenty-six. And there's a, Mike also pointed out, there's a number of these grants were awarded around the state, and part of his thinking was the earlier we moved, the quicker we might be able to get qualified contractors to get in to do the work.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And is this, are these federal funds?
I believe so, yeah, I, uh...
Oh, it's through the state?
Yeah, probably.
Is that the grant award right there?
Probably through building, building grounds.
Yeah, so BGS is probably the administrator of a grant, of a federal-funded grant.
Okay, there's, yeah, okay, there's no federal funding down here, so that takes part of the piece off, because if it was federal, there'd be a lot, a lot more restrictions.
All right, do you have any questions, Bob?
No, I think so.
Nope, you got anything more, Dennis?
No, just, Mike said to bring questions back if you had them, we can probably bring a representative from NBDA here if necessary, or if you're ready to move on, we'll get through.
Yeah, I mean, we approved going forward with it before, so I'm assuming that, unless you need guidance from us for something.
There's a grant, there's a, there's a sign off on that application I do believe.
Is it first page?
Yeah.
So, Carrie, what's that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we should, could you go?
Okay, good. Now, are you going to come to us again with, like, people that you would, that you've looked at as far as administrators, that type of thing, so that we can get rolling with things?
Yeah, is that what you prefer?
Yeah, yeah, that would be great if you could.
Yeah.
Well, first, how do we get your actual grant award, or your, is that the actual grant award, or is that the, oh, that's, you just need to sign it, and then boom, tip your arm around it with that? Nice, all right.
Two years sounds like a long time, but...
It doesn't, I don't think it sounds...
It's not, it's not, it's probably... Three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars over two years.
Fine, I don't know.
Right.
There's a, there's a lot of weatherization contractors.
Yeah, and maybe, you know, you start with this building, restart with, you know, and kind of piece it together from...
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, these lights just got changed, we just paid to have all these changed LED office was half done, and then they finished it this fall, so we've already just done all the LEDs in this building, just I think that was on a list to change, but we've already done it, so.
So, should we review, like, the scope of work again, and kind of consult with the girls to see what has already been done, I think, there was something said about the heating system at the, at the town garage was already replaced like two years ago?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's not a very old system.
To keep it at the back of it.
Right, so is the, I mean, is the new, but is the new system going to be a complete, is that new system going to be a com, like, the first heating system, or is it just going to be a supplemental system?
Not sure.
Like, how, how is this going to work? I don't know.
That's something you'd ask probably the contractor.
Yeah, and I'd go with me, but I'd have to look at what the scope of work...
And I'm assuming what they're doing is, any heating system is supposed to be more energy efficient than what we are using, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's, I know there's a plant for beefpups, there's a plant for, I believe it's a pellet stove, or who the, who the fire department, so they're different, different sources.
Pellet stove or pellet furnace?
Pellet, pellet.
Is this scope of work?
We have to be able to run on its own for a few days at a time, and it's, yeah.
I think a select board member needs to sign the grant agreement, it hasn't usually been, like, when I did the drainage, isn't usually the treasurer or the clerk, so there is a page.
I signed the board one, but that's because we applied as the planning commission. But I asked first.
Should we, should we table this to the first meeting in December, I mean, because that'll come in before this due date?
Before this.
And then that would give us time to review this scope of work again, find out what has already been done within, like, the last couple of years to see what the priorities are.
It's probably a good idea.
And then Larry's here, because, you know, he isn't here tonight, I don't know if he has an opinion, but...
Yeah, I mean...
I think it's a lot for, to not have him be a part of.
Hmm.
And some of that work must have been being done when, when they did the assessment, correct, when they did the appraisal of the buildings.
Some of the work being done when they, after we had the reappraisal, that was just done this summer, the reappraise, the appraisal for the MRF.
You probably mean, maybe lighting upgrades for where it hasn't been done.
I remember that, that was like two years ago.
Most likely.
Oh, no, I don't think so.
Was it really the MRF's?
I believe, it might have been spring, but I believe, yeah, I remember letting the guy in.
Oh, when they did that, yeah, I was...
I mean, are we going to do that? You know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we've gone through many energy efficient programs.
There's definitely some questions there.
So we could, like, just take some time to review this and come back with our...
We moved the lights and insulated the entire gym under, um...
I think though, if we approve, we go ahead on it, we can still do what's...
It's not your last night, you didn't even put it...
They look great.
It's not a bad, because we basically already approved the grant to go ahead and do that.
Yeah, because if we, if we just don't do it, then we just don't spend that.
Right, because you're still, now, the way I understand it, Dennis, we can pick and choose whatever we want to do and whatever we don't want to do, correct? So, even if we go ahead and sign this and approve and go ahead on it, there's still going to be discussion around what we are and what we aren't going to do.
Yeah, because they're only going to, they're going to reimburse those things that are done, other than twenty percent of the...
Yeah, so us signing this...
Isn't tying us to everything.
Isn't tying us to doing all of those things.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I know, I got some questions to answer, Mike sent this today. What happens if we, if we do every, no, no, that's not it. Do we need to decide what we're signing up for December fifteenth, or can we opt out of certain items? BGS will not be amending a grant agreement prior to December sixteen, however, as long as you're trying to complete the scope of work and attachment aid to the best of your ability, BGS and NK, there will be no repercussions. That might mean that not everything gets completed in scope of work, but as long as you don't add new projects not listed on this scope of work, it'll be fine.
What sounds like you can't add.
You can't add it.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes it sound better. Like wood pellets go up for some reason, it's crazy.
Yeah, we're going to build a new firehouse or something, you know, it's...
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I still think it would be a good idea to have a discussion. We're not here to just formally sign everything. Because it's not going to, it's not going to slow us up, I think we're, we're going to wait until Larry's here, have a discussion, then sign everything, it's not going to slow us down, because things aren't going to start until after our next meeting, anyway.
Yeah.
And just so that we do our due diligence and look through all this stuff first.
Is there anything you'd like brought back in terms of more information or anything?
I guess I just want to be certain that if we see something on there that we don't, really don't want to do for some reason, we don't have to do it, just because it's on the list of things.
Do you want, just confirmation that...
Yeah, 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 because I don't want to sign something and then be locked into all of that stuff, and then find out something that's a, you know, a bad idea to do it for our situation.
And once you get a contractor in, they may have a different take on what was in these, the original means of assessment, so, yeah. All right, and get that part of that.
Thank you.
Let's see, in Highway, did Harold have anything, did he?
No.
No. Oh, it's in budgets, did you have anything on, that's listed here?
No, just what I gave you, the budgets, to compare the budget, and I'm still working on gathering, gathering.
And you're up next then, Lisa.
Okay, so I have, as we talked about last select board meeting, was the three hundred thousand line of credit from Union Bank, so it is a line of credit, if you don't use it, you, you don't have to pay anything, it just sits there, which is what we want. This loan would mature every twelve months, but you don't have to pay it off, they would just review it every twelve months, and it, I think it's good for up to five years, but I know we're doing it for FEMA, if we don't get paid, most likely in twelve months, we may not get paid, so if it's like three years, I think we'll be okay, you know, just keep renewing it. And the amount of interest that we accrue is based on how much we use, so if we don't use any, we're good, if we use just a portion, then, and we only have to pay that at the end of the year.
And they do or don't reimburse the interest?
FEMA?
Yeah.
I don't know that yet, I don't know, I'm hoping.
Hmm.
I think we'd be able to put something in under administrative costs.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I haven't gotten there yet, but, yeah, so, so that, so it's three pages that you have to sign. Oh, for this. And I'm going to take this back to go with the agreement there. Tuesday, the USDA is coming and having a meeting at two o'clock, Larry has attended these in the past, so I'm hoping he will be able to attend, the engineer will be here, and Sean from USDA and his assistant or counterpart will be here, so it's a pretty big meeting. Alliance, Casey will be here, and it's to finalize the scope of work that's been done and then authorize payment, so it's a big deal. So that's Tuesday at two, if anybody is interested. I'm still working with Union Bank about the TAN note, which we do every year, so that doesn't happen until the very end of December for renewal. Bobby, you might be aware of SAM.gov, we had to renew that every year, so I, I just did that the other day, so that's been a bear for us in the past, and it went smoothly this time. And the buyout program that I've been working on with the six properties that we sent, submitted, I heard yesterday that all six properties have gone through the first phase.
Oh, good.
So it's really good, I really thought only two were going through, and he confirmed six are through the first phase, you know?
Right.
And we were in this for a very long time, months, months, but that was good news, and I let them all know, just to let them know, I haven't, we haven't forgotten about them, and it's still working, so it's moved on to the next phase. Clearwater Filtration is the company that comes and services our water, and they're coming on December third, when our engineer was here, he was noticing our water problems, and he has, he's an engineer, and he knows what could be the problem, because we're still having odor and this, and the black, and so he's listed out a few things, and I've sent him on to Clearwater for when they come to check out and see if this can get back to the way it was. And that's it.
Thank you, Lisa. And accessory, you saw what Dorothy had sent us, or all that there. Did Dan have anything? Fire and fast, nothing from them, no. Mike?
Yeah, so the planning commission, we voted last night to recommend Terrence Curran for the open position, I believe the process is now you have to vote to appoint Terrence to be on that commission, if he's interested, even after sitting through one of our meetings last night, so we're happy that he's willing to be a part of the team to replace Jennifer Rogers, being commissioned, that's one item. Because I've got a couple other things, do you want to start, Eric?
Yeah, why don't we...
Can you say the last name again?
Curran, C-U-R-R-A-N, first name is T-U-R-R-A-N-C-E.
Thank you.
I make the motion that we appoint Terrence Curran to the planning commission.
In a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And his term is, would go with Jennifer's term, so it's not a new three-year term, I don't know what...
Which, we don't know many of the terms, so I was going to ask you that, we have no idea, so...
Are the rules of procedure say three-year terms?
Right.
But everyone was on a one-year cycle of those awards, so if you take that, we basically all have the same three-year, which we shouldn't have, it should be staggered somehow, or we change our rules of procedure to say a one-year term, and do it like we've been doing it.
Well, I, I just did it from November to March this year, and then give us time.
I figured, I sent a letter for appointment, so figuring you were going with this, I have it already.
Yeah, figured. So we'll have to figure that out, maybe we'll talk to the commission and see if maybe, or take, see if people want to, if they want to set when their term expires or something, or, or we could just go back to one year.
Are other questions? One's about the lawn mowing at the parking area, is that something we should include in our budget? I think, Lisa, you and I talked, you were thinking maybe the town maintenance budget, maybe using the contract...
Yeah, I think that's what was decided, had to do it this, once he gave us the price, and then, and then it was agreed that, I believe, that it was agreed to have our town mow.
How about we leave monthly, or maybe once every two months, I mean, just a half gallon, and I have gone over there with volunteers, and we just threw all the string on our weed whackers in forty-five minutes, so it could use the more than volunteer help, so, so we need to include that in our budget, then, I'm, I take it. We wanted to ask about the memory wall, it came to us that we have this part going over there, and maybe it could be a home for it, we could at least tell the SD group what it is, and maybe find a slope on the property that would be a good place to put on the plan, that it could go there at some point. It wouldn't be any sort of commitment, that it would, but we haven't talked with them about it, I know there's a bunch of pieces to it down there, too, but we wanted to run that idea by you, because they're finalizing their last draft of the plan, and now it's like the time to be like, can you include this, and maybe a couple locations, but it was kind of an afterthought, we thought we'd bring it up to you all.
Is it possible for them to put it in there as a possibility in their plan, not a definite?
Everything in the plan is a possibility.
Okay.
So it's basically a vision, right, and what could be, what the state says can go where because of the flood zone and the river, and so, I think, you know, we talked to the river engineers, Act two fifty, and we found out what's needed, what isn't, and everything in there is just sort of, you know, if one day we decide we want to put an amphitheater in there, or a pavilion, the plan sort of show where that could go. So, it's a, it's totally planned, and so it could just say potential locations, or location, or locations, memory wall.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that we are sensitive to what the people want that donated to the town.
Absolutely, yeah, and that's not much over there right now, but, you know, as it's, maybe as it starts building up, you know, to come somewhere that could go, all right, so I'll have them put it in as a potential, potential place for it. The other question with the SD group, I missed this in their bid, in their scope of work, their final presentation of their plans to you, the select board, at a select board meeting, I mean, they brought that up to me, and I was like, well, that's odd, should probably live with us, but they said, let us, you know, let us know where you like it, and I thought, because we had it set as the select board, I'd ask before we said to them, keep it with us, final presentation will be sometime in January, most likely.
And you're talking the overall plan, basically?
Yeah, they'll bring a map, and show the plan to the people, and discuss the project, and then there's a report that goes with it.
And now, when you say give it to us, you mean turn it over to us?
Present it to us, like, here, pay us our final bill, we've done our work, thank you, and, yeah, it's like a presentation that was part of their, their proposal.
Okay, and I think there's probably, most likely, going to be ongoing stuff all the time after that, isn't there?
Then, whatever we do with the plan, right, once we get a plan from them, it's, now we can apply for grants, and so if there's a grant for hiking trails or something, we can say, hey, we've got this great plan here, if we want to put trails in this park, like, you know, apply for grants, or if, like, the library finds a grant for educational things that could go out there or something, you know, that's going to be on this plan, so you can turn to that plan and say, you know, we already have an idea of what we, like, a vision, and, and that bodes really well for, like, grants and applications. We, we kind of, I think, envision the development of the parkish areas over there as providing mostly of larger labor, labor to cut trails in, and then probably seeking donations for things like picnic tables, benches, you know, it's sort of be like you could buy a bench and let's say, in memory of, or donated by X, Y, Z business, or maybe even fundraising for various small items for over there. Kind of like a base temperature of the town for fundraising, like, not through you, but people in the town, you know, little things, and then as time goes on, maybe it'll be a place where we could start putting the bigger items, and then people have a better connection with the, that property. Kind of open-ended what's going to happen with it, but we know the two-point-to-it here is that's a green town power property that's deeded as an open conservation property now that we own, and then there's this dumb dump, you know, and so, see what happens with it.
Yeah, and I think probably when you guys present it, when it's all done, we can discuss, you know, how we want to handle if you guys maintain or we maintain how it works at that point.
Yeah, I mean, really, the only thing at this point is, well, when it gets flooded, but that, it needs work, it gets flooded for emergency services, but the mowing, and, you know, just knowing that that's a town property that, you know, we have to keep as sort of a conservation property.
Yeah.
The one part, not the whole thing. But, yeah, just for them to say, here's, here's what, we have all these plans, people commented on moving this and doing that, we talked to emergency services, they liked the new road design, or they didn't like it, so now the plan has to keep staying as is. There's a focus on what people said that we value to them, so river, people like the idea of making the river a little more natural, so, you know, riverbank plants growing along the river instead of gravel paths, so that's why they proposed the new, new path down to the fire hydrant, as opposed to where it is now. Implementations are up to us, you know, but we have a, we have an idea of where it can go.
Okay.
There's a lot, a lot of fun for this, talked to Clark's, and the conservation easement holders about the dry hydrant, and relocating that road and putting paths on that property, they have seemed open to all of it, which is good, it's town property, but it has an easement.
Yeah, okay.
So, do you want that presentation, take the planning commission or select board meeting?
I would think that... What is your thoughts on it? I know what I'm thinking, but...
You know, I don't know, I'm not as up to date on all of this as you are, but if it's, if they've been doing all of the work, I would say it would go to them.
Yeah, that's my opinion, too.
Yeah, we'll invite the towns, we'll get the town to everything else, if people are definitely interested. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to not make the decision on that.
Yeah, no, I mean, you guys...
Seems to make sense.
Like Bobby said, you guys have gone to all the work, you should get, be able to present everything.
I was surprised when they mentioned this to me, I was like, if you're not doing it here, and they're like, well, our scope of work says there, I was like, okay, I'll ask it. That's everything, all right?
Great, thank you. Oh, I skipped over update on ongoing grants, did you have anything, Lisa, on that?
No, just Carrie had left her, she's not here, but she left an update about FEMA, she's doing those weekly meetings, going over the damage inventory for the roads. Next steps is to enter all the labor, the material, and the equipment costs in for each site, FEMA will be providing the spreadsheets for her, and this will take time to get completed. Three-site inspections are scheduled for tomorrow at nine AM, and Harold will be joining them, and those are for Pound Road, Boulder Beach Dry Hydrant, and Clark's Land...
And those are for Pound Road, Boulder Beach Dry Hydrant, and Clark's Landing Dry Hydrant. So, so every Wednesday she has a meeting. That's it.
And any other business anybody has? No? And we signed the orders and motion to adjourn.
That's all moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.